Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the closed session of the Hermosa Beach School Board for May 8th, 2019. Calling this closed session to order for the evening, Michelle, will you please take the roll?
Thank you. Maggie Bovina-Monica?
Present.
Jen Cole?
Present.
Doug Gardner?
Present.
Monique Hassan?
Present.
Stephen McCall?
Present.
All present.
Thank you. Next, we will have oral communications from the audience to the board. I see one person in the back. Are you here to speak?
No. Just to watch.
Just to watch. Okay. Well, this part of the show is now over. And we're going to adjourn to closed session because we see no oral communications. We'll be back at 7:00. Thank you. Hello? All right. Jack, please. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the regular meeting of the Hermosa Beach School Board for May 8th, 2019. There was nothing to report out of the closed session. We call to order the open session for tonight's meeting. Michelle, will you please take the roll?
Maggie Bovina-Monica?
Present.
Jen Cole?
Present.
Doug Gardner?
Present.
Monique Hassan?
Present.
And Stephen McCall?
Present.
All present.
Thank you. Can we please stand for the flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the principle of liberty and justice for all.
Before we get going with the rest of the agenda, I'd like to take a moment of silence for the victims of the school shooting at Highlands Ranch STEM School in Colorado. Thank you. We will now move on to approval of tonight's agenda. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
So move.
Thank you, Maggie. A second?
A second.
Thank you, Jen. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. We will now move on to announcements, and we will start with our certificates of recognition of staff and retirees. Before we start that part, there are a number of former board members in the audience tonight. I'd like to take a moment to recognize each of them and ask them to stand up and be recognized for the crowd and the folks watching at home. So if you could please stand when I call your name. This is very school appropriate. I would appreciate it. Thank you. Patty Ackerman. Lisa Claypool. Linda Beck. Lance Weidman. Wait, man, sorry. And Joe Marks. Thank you to all of you for all your dedication to the district, your years of service and hard work. All the us and all of the children appreciate it. So thank you. So now we'll move on to the certificates of recognition to staff for years of service.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Well, it's wonderful to have all of you here. Thank you, board members, for taking the time to spend this evening with us. We have achieved a lot in the last few years, and we don't feel that any one of us could have done it on our own. And it was really on the shoulders of all of you who stood up, who have helped us to be successful and to continue the tradition of excellence that we've had in our school district. And so I know you went through tough times, you made hard decisions, you made good decisions, and you've been loyal, as loyal can be, back to our community and to our kids. And I had the privilege of knowing most of you when I was a parent in the school district. I see the back row hired me when I came into the school district. Yes? And so I feel like you're all family to me. So this is really very special, and I know that the board, you know, feels the same way. So thank you, thank you so much for being here. We could not be where we are without all of you. So thanks, thanks again. And then, of course, our employees in the district are second to none. Tonight, we were going to recognize employees from different categories of our organization with their years of service pins, and it's always a great time for us to reflect on our friendships and on our collegial interactions with one another, and how important it is for us to really all pull together to be the best that we can be. And we have our PTA, PTO, and our Ed Foundation, who provided a cake for us, and I want to thank you so much for making this a really special night tonight. And I think it's a good reminder that at least every decade, we should stop and reflect and to think about where we've been, and our future is super bright. So let's get going. Doug, come with me.
Okay.
Okay. So first, we have the five-year pin. And so Camille Hawks, are you here? Is Camille here tonight? Camille is a noon duty aide. She's probably home with an ice pack on her head and on her feet. That is a tough job. You guys know what I'm talking about, right?
Graham definitely does.
Yeah. Next, we have Tanya Kilroy, who, come on up. She's a middle school teacher. This is her five-year pin.
Uh-oh. This looks like a trip.
Five years.
And then there's...
We didn't practice this part.
Thank you. Just stay up here so we can take a picture. Okay. No.
Please.
Okay, that's a sign. Megan McLean. Megan is our special day class teacher. Five years, Megan.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. You're like puppy dogs up here.
I know. We should have reversed.
And next, we have Paula Montalbo, who has moved from being our clerk to being our business manager, and she's just doing an incredible job. Congratulations, Paula.
Yes.
Ellie Ping, is Ellie here tonight? I don't think she was. She's our TK teacher. Lisa Shepatak, who is our instructional aide. Barbara Sinner, who's also noon duty. Nikki Span, is Nikki here tonight? She has a little one at home, so she's a fifth grade teacher, and I can't believe she's been here for five years already. Denise Valotini Stern. Denise is school psychologist. She was with the district for four years, and then she thought the grass is greener in another district, and she left. But she was only gone for one year, so she's back. And that was five years ago. So, see?
Smart move.
Hug?
Smart move.
Smart move. Evelyn Walla, who is also noon duty. She's not here tonight. And Maya Williams. Maya Williams is our resource teacher. Again, I can't believe this has been five years. Unbelievable. Congratulations, and this is a wonderful, wonderful class of five years, and so let's have a big round of applause for all.
Now, we should have a picture.
Oh, John.
He's ready.
I'm ready. In front of the podium.
Get in front of that.
In front of the podium. Can I hide behind it?
Thank you.
So now we have 10 years. Gia Bussi, is Gia here? Gia teaches third grade, and it just seems like last year that I gave you your five-year pin, but now it's 10 years, and we are still hanging in there and doing great stuff. So thanks, Gia. Densia Ingram, who is an extended day aide, is she here tonight? No. Hector Murphy, who is also a noon aide, and really has been with the district 10 years. Tricia Romero, is Tricia here? No? Okay. She's an instructional aide, IBI, works in special ed. And Debbie Witt. I saw her smiling. Debbie is an instructional aide for special ed. And so this is our 10-year crowd.
Another picture?
Yes.
Yes, please.
Miss Bussi students, come on up.
Thank you.
Okay. 15 years. First up is Kathy Barrow, who is middle school, eighth grade, language aide, and my neighbor. Kathy and I live on the same street, a couple houses down, and it's just, when I came back into the district, when I came, long time ago now, it was great because I knew at least one person who was familiar, and every time I drive by her house, I always look. I don't know why, I just always feel like it's a connection back to the community.
And I did hire her, too. I was on a community...
Oh, yeah. You said, "I'm just saying." Good move, Kathy Barrow. Jason Butcher, is Jason here tonight?
Oh.
Oh.
He's got little kids, too.
A lot of our staff and employees have little kids. Jason's middle school, PE, and he was also here for four years, then I don't know what he did, but now he's back to 15, so he's really worked for the district 19 years, but he's getting his 15-year pin. Did you follow? That sounds like new math. Yeah. So Jason is terrific. Julie Postaver, is Julie here tonight? Okay. And then Ruth Serrano, she is an instructional aide. Is Ruth here tonight? Okay, well, props it up, sister, for 15 years. Wendy Bradley, is Wendy here? She has a little one, too. Kelly Trau, she's our librarian over at Valley. No? Okay. But I see Lynn. Lynn Gonzalez, former school board member and instructional aide for special ed. Wonderful. And that's it again. So you got all three of them. Okay, and then 25 years. So is David here tonight? I don't think...
Well, he said he wasn't coming.
Okay. David Carver is an operations worker. He's worked with us for 25 years. That is so nice. He deserves it. He is really someone who is... He's just so authentic and genuine, and he's positive, and he helps people get over rough patches when things maybe aren't going the way that they should. He's extremely supportive. I was on negotiations with him for years, and he is really a gem. We are so lucky, just like we are to have all of you. But David, at 25 years, is really, really, very, very, very special. So we'll get him his award and his pin and all of the other things. Should we just go into the next one?
Sure.
Well deserved. I, you know, Betsy, I grew up within the district as well, and I, when I came... Yeah. We all have. But when I came back, it was really fun to reconnect with her. And Betsy is... Every school district has a heart and soul, and Betsy is the heart and soul. She is the one that the kids can go to when they're like, "Oh, my gosh, I can't believe I did this," or "I need this," or "I want this," or just, "Please say hi to me." And she makes... Betsy has that magical touch of making everything okay. And you're going to leave a big hole in our organization because you're retiring. I'm not going to tell you the story, but I am going to say that Betsy and her husband, Jim, they really have this Hermosa Beach, you know, like love, love story, because they met when they were teenagers, and I heard all about it at the pancake breakfast, and for $20, I'll tell you what it was. She... It was so special for me to sit with Jim, but I've always known that Betsy is just a super person and a very special individual. Her children are really successful. I had to live through the pregnancy of her first grandchild, knowing if it was a cucumber, a melon, a watermelon, you know, that whole thing. Oh, my God. I hated vegetables and fruits after that. But we had fun. We both became grandmas at the same time, so it was a lot of fun. So this is on behalf of the board, and we're going to miss you. This is a proclamation from the Almer... The city, I'm sorry, from the city of Hermosa Beach to you. Do you want me to read all the what it... We're asked... Okay. Beautiful. This is a proclamation in your honor from the California Legislature, and this is from Almer Asucci. Put it on the refrigerator. And this beautiful one is from Janice Hahn, who is a county supervisor. So congratulations. We just really, really treasure you. Know that you'll come by and see us.
All right. Before we adjourn for cake, we'd like to invite all the former board members who are here in the audience, whose names were read earlier for a picture as well. I'd like to invite down also the current board members to be a part of it.
All the school board members.
Old people, old people.
I'm going to hide behind the podium.
That is a classic.
Okay. Corral the cats.
We can get close.
Come on. There you go, Lisa. You know how to do a picture.
She's always a true friend.
No.
Smaller in front.
There we go. Unstructured. All right, everybody, thank you very much. Okay. Three, two, one. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hello, all right, are you ready to get started again? Everybody ready? All right, we'll bring the meeting back to in session. I want to take a moment once again to thank all of our former board members, our staff, who was honored tonight, all of our other staff administrators, everyone who worked so hard to make this district so terrific, the PTO and the Ed Foundation for providing the sugar. It was delicious, so thank you to them and we will move on to oral communications from the audience to the board. Members of the audience may address the board on any topic regardless of whether it is listed on the agenda. However, the board may not discuss issues raised that are not listed on the agenda. Topics not on the agenda that are brought to the board's attention may be investigated by the administration and report made to the board, either publicly or privately at a future meeting. Complaints regarding district employees must be dealt with in closed session, not in public. Comments from visitors shall not exceed three minutes unless waived by a majority of all members of the board. We have two pink cards tonight, so we'll start with those. We'll start with Mr. Higgins. There he is.
He wants me to leave. Good evening. I was wondering if we're getting closer to actually producing a plan for the construction truck traffic and how that's going to be handled. Do we have a date by which we'll have that?
We do not yet have a precise date. Later in the meeting, we have our friends from Erickson Hall in the back. We expect to be approving their contract and get them going and part of their pre-construction activities that they'll be working on over the next couple of months will include that information.
Thank you. Is it safe to assume that you'll know when you'll have a date by the next meeting?
Hopefully.
Okay, okay.
He's nodding his head, so I think so.
Yeah, at least, yeah. Because, you know, the big thing is that there was a lot of discussion about involving the community in the process and I just want to reiterate my major concerns with that. And one would be two-way traffic on Morningside. How are you going to do that without taking parking space away? How are you going to do it without having flagmen at both ends? Because if the trucks are opposing or trying to turn at the same time from Gould on to Morningside, there's no way they can do it. Those kind of issues. Where are you going to stage the trucks, like the cement trucks or the demolition trucks? Are you going to put them, for instance, up in a parking lot somewhere and radio dispatch them? Or are you going to line them up on the residential streets? In which case the engines will be running for hours, you know, trucks won't be there for hours, but they'll be staging. That kind of thing. This morning or yesterday, well, Monday, God, I'm losing track of time. Monday I had to park, repark my car for street sweep a day. Had to go five blocks to find a parking place. Where are we going to put the construction workers? Are they going to be able to park on-site? Okay, it's, you know, little, it's at that level of detail that I'm concerned with and I just wanted to raise some of those issues and just hope, I hope you guys are thinking about it. Hope you're thinking about them if you're preparing the plan, so thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Claypool. Yeah.
Thank you, it's so good to be here. Thank you for inviting the previous board members, it was a wonderful evening tonight. I'm here to just say a few words. Number one, Ms. Escolante, I want to thank you so much for what you've done regarding choosing National Teacher Appreciation Week each year to honor the staff. Some people do it at the beginning of the year, some people do it at the end of the year. I do think it's a very well-placed location for honoring people and I thank you for that. I came by the district office last summer to visit someone who I adore, her name is Mrs. Angela Jones, and she had snuck out in the middle of the night. And she wasn't here anymore. And so I thought it would be fitting and appropriate to just take a few moments to say that Angela Jones, the business manager, served our school district for 18 years on one side of the new century and 18 years before. Her 36 years were tremendous. It was a lifetime for some of us and her kids came to our schools and she gave and gave and gave and was one of those people who started in the district at a level and gave her whole life to Hermosa. And to her, I am grateful for all of her wonderful leadership through bond issues that passed and bond issues that failed. She deserves a round of applause and I just want to thank her and say, Angela, you're probably not watching the show, but anyone in the community who knows her knows how wonderful she is. And Mrs. Montalvo, I'm so wish you luck in your job. Boy, the shoes are really, really big. So let's hear it for Angela Jones. And then one last little positive thing because I can't help myself when you give me a microphone. Our students at Hermosa schools get to choose between two amazing high schools, Redondo Union High School and Miracosta High School. And though I am a teacher at Miracosta, I know that currently the student body president at Redondo is a Hermosa grad. And for those people and parents in the community who might be watching this show that worry that the Hermosa kids coming from a small school can't possibly be successful. In 2020, the senior class treasurer will be Billy Bezara, a Hermosa student. The senior class president will be Finn Condrin, a Hermosa grad. The ASB vice president and student school board rep will be John Darcy, a Hermosa grad. And the Miracosta High School student body president at Miracosta will be Kate Condrin. Leaders come from the small school we all know and love as Hermosa. Thank you all so much and have a great night.
Thank you. Do we have any other further oral communications? Seeing none, I will close the public comment and we will move on to written communications. Does the group have any? Maggie?
I received an email communication from Suzanne Evans regarding the Valley sanding.
Thank you, Jen?
I received about three different emails regarding support for AP.
Thank you. Monique?
I received the same.
Steven?
Same.
Thank you. Okay.
Sorry, there's also a music performance that is going to be happening at the end of the month with Mr. Harrison's music program. It's, I want to say it's May 30th, is that correct? And it's a fundraiser for their program, so I'll get the correct information. It's either the 29th or the 30th.
Yeah, we can bring that one back. I received one comment on the superintendent and four comments on the assistant principal role. We will now move on to superintendent update. Superintendent Escolante.
Thank you, I'm going to kick it off with enrollment. We are currently at 1347, which is what we were at in the previous month, so stable there. I also want to remind people that now is the time, if you are not planning to return to Hermosa schools for whatever reason, please let the office know. And then also, if you're in the neighborhood and you just haven't gotten it together and you're going to register with us, which we really expect you're going to do, now, there's no time like the present. It really does help us in order for our planning and we want to make sure that we have the best in place for when your kids arrive in the fall. But it also helps you to build new relationships and friends with people because we have different activities, open house and some other things that you might want to attend, so let's get your neighbors. If you're, you can be a self-appointed neighborhood watch. If there's anyone on your block who has school-aged children and they're not registered, bring them on down, take them a cup of coffee, get them going and get them in the system. So we want our Hermosa kids here in Hermosa. The other thing is that I really want to compliment both principals for the amazing job and also assistant principal Rockwell for the incredible job that they have spent months and months with our police department and our fire chief and our city officials to coordinate off-site evacuations in the event should a school not be a safe location. And that could be for a number of reasons. It could be for an earthquake, it could be for, you know, some sort of a criminal activity. It could be for whatever, but we haven't done that before in the district and I think that it shows that we don't just rest on our laurels when we think we've put a fence up or we've put in a lock on a gate or something like that. We are always looking for ways to improve the practical, meaningful learning that students have about their own safety. And we just opened up the board meeting tonight, you know, with another tragedy, 13th since the start of the school year, school shootings. And so when we were planning this, you know, we wondered if the kindergarteners could make it, we wondered if the kids with special needs could make it, we wondered if the irreverent eighth graders would make it. And everyone just absolutely rose to the occasion and I can't thank the city enough. The coordination of their efforts, it was spot-on, it made me feel as if there was an emergency. They worry about their own spot. So the traffic control, they were traffic control. The police, they were the police. And it's been very, very rewarding. So also thank you to Brandy, who is the emergency command coordinator, I'm sure that's the wrong title, but with the city. So thank you very much. You both put, all three of you, put a lot of effort into this and we really appreciate it. The testing, we've been testing, state testing, and that's been going really well. This year, we haven't had any, right when we said we haven't had any snags with technology, there was an outage in the city which caused our, you know, which was a domino effect. So luckily it happened on a Monday and we don't test on Mondays, so we were absolutely fine. But it is a daunting task, there's specific software that has to be loaded on enough computers to test 800, over 800 kids, close to 900 kids. Each child has to know their own password, each child needs to know how to log on and it has not been easy. But our IT team, who you know, just knocked it out, like it was no big deal. And we haven't had any glitches at all with technology and that is something that we are very grateful for. I also want to remind the public that I think it's just through Friday that the science adoption materials are available for public review. We have them located over at the district office because generally there's some parking over there and if you want to take a look at the materials and send your kids to the park, the park's right there. So if you're interested, stop by and the publisher is Amplify, so you could even go onto online and check it out for yourself. And I just want to remind people also when we're talking about registration that our after-school extended daycare, childcare program is also accepted. after-school extended daycare, childcare program is also accepting, um, registration. And just a reminder that we have before-school at, at View, before and after at View, and after-school for fourth and fifth graders at Valley. So again, it would really help us out with our planning. If you are interested in that or need further information, you can hop on the website, call Ms. Gluck, or, um, Ms. Avil, who's in charge of the program, and they'll be happy to help you. Um, and I think that's it. If anyone has any questions, happy to answer those.
Are there any questions for the superintendent? All right, and we will move on to board reports. What, something else?
Nevermind, I'm going to, I'm so busy, sorry.
Okay.
I was on the note.
All good? How it's all, all good?
Good.
All good? All good? All right, uh, we're going to move on to board reports. Um, Steven, anything from you? Okay, Monique?
No.
Jen?
No.
Maggie?
You're going to do the panel?
I can do it, yeah. That's all you had? Okay, I had, uh, two things to report. Uh, first, we had, um, at least for myself, the first city-school, uh, district compact meeting, uh, with Maggie and the superintendent and our counterparts from the city, um, Council Member Massey, uh, Council Member Campbell, who was here earlier this evening, and, uh, City Manager Sujah, um, to meet about a number of topics, including, um, where we are with North School and the, the Measure S program as a whole, um, vaping, as well as, um, discussing some of the, uh, things that have been going on between the two governing bodies and how to, uh, make sure that the relationship between the two, two governing bodies remain, remains strong. Um, so we had that, we plan to now meet, uh, quarterly, uh, there hadn't been a meeting in a while, so it's good that we're going to get back into that rhythm. And those meetings are already scheduled for, um, July, or I think it might be August, um, October and January for, uh, this coming year. So it'll be good to meet, uh, continue to regularly meet with our counterparts over there, um, as well as we are looking at meeting with the, the larger MOU team, um, with the city, um, Maggie and myself, the superintendent, um, SVA, the attorney, and the, the comparable city staff, Sujah, Justin Stacy instead of Mary on that one, and, um, the city attorney and Leanne, the, um, from the city staff, that we're looking at a meeting, um, coming up in the next couple of weeks with that group. Um, the second board report is, I participated on a panel, uh, presented by the South Bay League of Women Voters, uh, along with Assembly Member Al Marasucci and, um, Steve, whose na, last name is escaping me, he's the superintendent in Redondo.
Keller.
Keller, thank you. Um, that was held at Miracosta, Miracosta High School, um, talking about in particular, uh, the Assembly Members' Bill that's, he's presented the last couple of years about, uh, full and fair funding, uh, for school districts and the impact that that could have on school districts, the, uh, particularly here in the South Bay, as well as some of the impacts of the, the current funding system and how that, that is impacting the di, the different districts. Um, each of the three panel members, uh, gave a little spiel, and then it was open for questions, it was a healthy dialogue, um, and it was good to have the assembly member there to hear both from the local, uh, school districts as well, as well as from the public. So that was a really good opportunity as well. Um, so with that, we will move on to superintendent report and board discussion, starting with R dash thirty-three dash eighteen nineteen on the annual report on the nineteen-twenty district communication plan. Good evening.
Uh, thank you very much. First, I want to start off, um, by thanking you all again for having me on board for these years. As you, um, some of you recall, I came on board after the, uh, uh, the measure prior to Measure S failed to gain passage with a pledge to try and create a more informed electorate, um, in order to, uh, give Measure S a fair chance of, of, uh, passing through, and, uh, stuck around ever since, so I really appreciate that opportunity, it's been a great experience for me. Um, on a personal note, my involvement in the school district has led me to, uh, actually, I've applied and been accepted into USC, and I'm now in my third semester working towards my Doctorate of Education, so.
Ah, that's awesome.
And I consider, I consider this experience and working with all of you to be the motivating, motivating factor that's sending that direction. So I thank you for that, for that inspiration that you've all provided here. Uh, what I'm going to do tonight is, uh, it's been a little bit a while since I've been in front of you, uh, is to review some of our communications tactics in the, in the past and what we're looking forward to doing in the, in the future, uh, starting with, uh, the main channels that we've been, uh, implementing for the last, uh, year or so. We've been focused mostly on three areas, which has been our website, our social media platforms, and media relations in general. I'd like to go through each one of those, a little bit of a recap and a look forward, so we're all up to speed on what we've been doing. I think we're all familiar with some of the trials and tribulations throughout the years in dealing with our website. Uh, what we addressed initially was, uh, that the webs, old website was not mobile-friendly, which is actually what led us down the path to redoing our entire website. I had contacted our website provider, let them know that we really wanted to move into a mobile-friendly situation. They looked at the template that we had and realized that we were working with a one-point O version of their website, and, um, created an opportunity for us to move forward into a three-point O version of the website, and that's sort of how we, uh, started the, the revamping of the website came from there. Uh, the old website was very hard to navigate, particularly it was very confusing for people visiting the site to even know if they were on the school site, if they were on the district site. When they were moving between the two, it was very difficult to find things. Uh, the website was not dynamic, which means on our end it was very difficult for us to sort of move things around and present information in a way that made sense and to make changes quickly when we needed to. And in general, the design was out of sight, uh, out of date, and some of the information on it also, because the site had been so old, it had dark corners that people hadn't visited in a long time, which had, with information that definitely needed some cleaning up. And it was an opportunity for us to really start digging into the site and start weeding out some of that stuff. Um, so what we ended up with, I'm sure a lot of you are familiar with the site by now, I don't know how much time you spend on it, but we've come up with something that's considerably more, uh, user-friendly. Um, our, in our desktop presentation, we have our slider up front with some nice visuals, we have our sort of quick access buttons, uh, which are very easy to, to spot, for the, which we've, uh, loaded up with the most visited and most used information that people come to the site for, or the ones we want them to be able to find quickly, such as emergency information. Also includes that little section in the bottom underneath the buttons, where you get to put sort of our most important and current piece of news. And I also want to point out that, um, the school sites mirror the layout of the district site, so that it's a, it's a similar experience. What we did do is we've color-coded each school, um, we're working with our new logo, and what we've done is we've actually color-coded each school site to match the rings in our, in our rising logo. We've left the middle color open for North School, and I can't wait for us to get that rolling and work that into the mix. But we kept, kept blue for the district site, so people moving between sites will immediately know where they are, because their color will change instantly and let them know that they have moved to a different site. Um, scrolling down a little bit, we have our upcoming events, which, um, automatically scrolls through, um, ten most, uh, ten, uh, upcoming events, uh, with a chance to click on each one to get more information, or to visit, a, a quick button to visit the entire calendar. Uh, we have a little bit of a graphic icon representation for each event, um, where our quicklink section is up there as well, and our news section, which is now way more interesting, as you see up on the right hand, where we get to do a little of an image to go with it, and it's, uh, it's much more automated, we just load the news into the system and it automatically puts it in there and archives it for us, and creates this little area in the front where people can see the most, uh, most recent news items. And we've been a very, uh, very busy school district, I've been updating that site on almost, pretty much every week we have something new to report. Um, and then scrolling down towards the bottom, we have another section where we get to put, um, a featured item, the moment we've been promoting, uh, the upcoming, uh, Principal Gluck giving a tour to, uh, parents at, at View School. And we have this extra section on the bottom where we've been able to highlight all of our, uh, partners, giving us a good chance to put HPEF and HPTO in a little more prominent position with their logos showing instead of just this sort of text banner, which is all we ever really had to work with before. And then another quick access on the bottom to be able to, um, find our schools. On the mobile side, uh, what happens is when people visit the site, it automatically sorts all that into a single row. Before, people would visit the site mobile, and they would literally get the entire site, and they would have to thumb their way into the thing they want, and if they were reading, they have to scroll right, scroll left, scroll right. So, uh, when people experience the site, everything now gets lined up top to bottom, everything is nice and wide across the entire phone, so it makes the experience much easier. And now that all of us, I think, have, in the past, we've needed to find information on the site, rolled our eyes and rolled up our sleeves and didn't look forward to it, and now I think it's been much more of a, much more of a user-friendly experience. Uh, moving, so, some stats about our website, we get about thirteen hundred visitors a week, uh, which is, uh, oddly mirrored of our, um, of our enrollment of about thirteen forty-eight. This doesn't mean that each household is hitting us once, once, sometimes two parents will hit at the same time, but, um, and we get a one point, uh, seventeen hundred sessions each week, which means there are a portion of, of people who come to the site a couple of times a week. Um, typically when a person comes, they stay for about two pages, which means they usually go to the, the homepage, then go to the page with the information they want, and they, and they're done. Our session is about one minute and ten seconds for the time people come, um, that's a, a combination of very short sessions, a lot of very short sessions, and then a few very long sessions. Uh, so our traffic is up about ten percent since we've redone the site. I don't know if that's because it's less of a, the, uh, white-knuckle experience to come visit our site, but it may be, uh, I'll take credit for that, sure. Uh, and our, um, uh, mobile users is up to forty-three percent, so a little bit less than half of the people who visit our site do so from a cellphone or from a tablet, and that is up slightly also from when we relaunch the site. Our most popular visits go to the homepage by far, lunch menu, always important, um, calendars such as bell schedules and knowing when vacations are and various times off at the school, uh, our events page, and then people looking to contact the school by either getting specific board members, staff members, or just coming to our generic page. This little, uh, graph on the right shows you our usage over time in a typical week. As you can see, um, everybody's tucked in their beds until five o'clock, and then at six o'clock we start getting some traffic during the week, and, uh, seven o'clock is our key hour every day, and I'm guessing that's when a lot of the lunch menus, that's when people are deciding if their kids are going to eat lunch, or if they're going to be making them lunch, so a lot of our traffic goes to there. Uh, we do have a lot of Sunday traffic of people getting ready for the week, and Saturday people seem to, seem to take a rest. And we do get traffic all the way through and fairly heavy traffic up until ten PM at night. So our site is, uh, you know, is pretty active most of the time, um, it is a, a, a dynamic, thriving little hub for us. Um, moving forward and what we'd like to do next for the website, because this isn't done, uh, menu simplification, we're still at a situation where some of these menus, if you click on district, you get, if the pull-down has about fifteen items on it on some people's computers, it's so long that it literally scrolls off the bottom of their page and they can't access some of it. So we need to, uh, perhaps over the summer, take a look at how we can simplify navigation into some overarching categories, so we can at least narrow down that menu, make it a little bit more intuitive, find some of the more obscure stuff that people come to look for. Um, a process for calendar entries, so, uh, now that we've redone our calendar and the way the events are presented, each, uh, item needs to have a, a perfectly square thumbnail uploaded with it to represent that item. Um, the length of the title can be above a certain number of characters, because then what happens is, as it's scrolling through, the whole section expands and contracts and it bumps the whole page up and down. So I'm not the only one entering those items, there are people at each of the school district, uh, sorry, the, each of these school site offices that are doing that as well. So I'm going, working on a document and a training to be able to make it so that everybody is uploading it in a way that is consistent, and I'm creating a, um, database of thumbnails so that, you know, we don't expect any graphics, you know, graphic artists working in the office, so creating some, some generic thumbnails to make it easier for them to locate and put those up, because otherwise we get sort of a generic calendar logo that pops up. So I want to be able to keep that looking nice. Um, we're going to be phasing out our resources section, I don't know if you've encountered some of our pages where all of our downloads are actually at the bottom of the page in a section called resources, and that's a function of the, of the template itself. Um, it's not much effort to move those into the actual text itself, which is really where it should be. People shouldn't be scrolling down to the bottom and back up again, um, so, we need to work on that. Uh, and a focus on district pages, so the story about that is that when we originally launched the website, the plan was to start with the district pages and get that really buttoned down tight, and then move down to the school site. There were some delays in working with the company and getting the template launched, that by the time we really rolled it out, we were drifting narrowly, perilously close to, um, registration. So it became real important for us to focus on the school sites. So what ended up happening is Views and Valley sites have had, have done, have had a lot more focus put on it, um, due to those constraints, and then we can use the summer to then move up to the district site and start cleaning up some of the stuff that needs to be done there. And the last item is just sort of generic debugging, and I want to comment about that a little bit, just to clarify what, uh, my role was in launching the site, uh, because it was a bit of a buggy launch when it came out. Some of the things that we, you know, we continued to work with the same web company, we just upgraded the template, so we didn't move on to a new company. Um, the template that we worked with was one of their newer ones, we were one of the first school districts to use it, so we were a little bit of a pilot program for them, and I've been working very closely with them. So I don't code, I didn't create the site, I didn't lay out the site or lay out the template, but I do, I'm the person who manages the content within it. But the bugs that were involved and still continue to involve and show up, you might have noticed occasionally a little blue box in the corner of certain pages for no real reason whatsoever, um, some pictures that we upload will come up, you know, stretched in certain directions, so, uh, my role is, was to work with the company, uh, to roll out that template, to help them highlight the shortcomings in some of their programming, and, uh, we continue to do that to this day. We're still, still find little bugs here and there, and they're continuing to roll out new features, uh, which we, um, you know, they let me know about, and we pop them on the page and see how they work out, usually over the weekend, some obscure hours, so, uh, no one sees it. One of the challenges we had was that we didn't have a staging site. Typically, you have an opportunity to build a website, sort of in its little sandbox, and play around with it, and then you take it live, and then it's already been worked on. This particular company we're working with didn't have that. So that's why we sort of launched, you might remember, we launched and then we sort of un-launched, when we got to see all that all the problems were, we didn't really have the ability to sort that out. And that's just, you know, we're working with a company that's, uh, you know, in a price range. If we wanted to have a custom-built site and spend thousands of dollars on it, we could have gone a different way, but we worked within our budget, and so it's a project, it's an ongoing process. So, that's kind of where we're at with the website. Uh, moving forward to social media, uh, our main platforms have been Facebook, Instagram, Twitter, and Nextdoor, which is a, an up-and-comer, which we'll talk about in the end of this. But moving one at a time, starting with the granddaddy of them all, Facebook. We have about nine hundred and forty followers on Facebook, we reach about four thousand five hundred, reach is a, it's a vague term for Facebook, it really, it means impressions. We're not reaching four thousand five hundred people, it just means that we are making four thousand five hundred impressions. So if one person came to this, came to Facebook four thousand five hundred times, we'd still get that number of four thousand five hundred. We're, um, so that's basically the number, that includes repeat visits to our, uh, to our Facebook page, or people who see different posts multiple times. But each post we put up reaches about two hundred and ten unique people every time we put it up. Uh, for video in April, this is, these numbers are using April, by the way, as a baseline, uh, we've had about eighty, uh, a hundred and eighty-five minutes of video viewed total in the month of April. That doesn't mean we've produced a hundred and eighty-five minutes of video, I'd be getting an Oscar if I was doing, uh, that kind of stuff, or maybe working on Game of Thrones, but, uh, what it is, is that includes, I've been putting up videos that are ten seconds long, and we put up things, some video that are two minutes long. So, all total, we've had about, we've had four hundred and eighty-seven people altogether who have viewed our video for a total of a hundred and eighty-five minutes of sitting in front of their screens watching that go down. Uh, moving on to Instagram, which, uh, in the social media world has actually grown to overtake Facebook as the, um, social media platform of choice for most people, uh, in, in our age group, uh, not so much among the students. Uh, we're not doing a TikTok campaign or anything like that for, for some of the, the younger stuff, because our goal is to communicate with the families in the community. Uh, we have seven hundred and forty-nine followers on Instagram, that is a slightly misleading number. Unlike Facebook, where people follow us in order to see our content, Instagram is more of a, uh, standing on a, standing on a soapbox communication tool. Uh, we have, this, those seven hundred and forty-nine people have basically asked to have our information put in their feed on a regular basis, but also because we are heavily working against hashtags of Hermosa Beach, Hermosa Schools, Redondo Beach, South Bay, so people who are just cruising Instagram for information about our, about our community will, uh, organically find our information, even if they haven't specifically found it before and signed up for it. So that seven hundred and forty-nine number is a little bit misleading, and that's why we make nine thousand three hundred, uh, impressions a month on Instagram, it's not to those same seven hundred and forty-nine people, it's to a much larger audience. Uh, each one of our posts reaches about, uh, four hundred people. We post about five times a week, every week, uh, so our unique viewers, about four hundred and seventy unique people see our Instagram communications each week. Um, Instagram is the one platform that didn't exist before I came on board for you guys, it existed but it wasn't being utilized. Uh, it's a very, obviously, it's a very photo-heavy, uh- Uh, it's a very, obviously, it's a very photo-heavy, uh, platform, and I, it's one of my areas I enjoy, taking photos. So it's been a good opportunity for us, and I just wanna point out that I've created seven hundred and fifty posts for the school district since we've launched our Instagram, uh, account. A vast majority of them using original artwork to highlight our school. Moving on to Twitter, which is probably the least used, uh, of platforms amongst, uh, the age group we're trying to reach, but uh, it's with most of our platforms, it's, it's only a little bit of more incremental work to include these platforms. So I'm just repackaging, repurposing a lot of the same communications into a slightly different format. And it's always entertaining to try and get my posts down to two hundred and, you know, under two hundred characters for Twitter. Uh, we have a fixed four hundred and twenty-nine followers, but once again, much like Instagram, it is, uh, works on that more of a hashtag basis, so we reach a much larger audience. Almost every one of our posts is hashtagging against the city of Hermosa Beach. So anybody looking for information about Hermosa Beach is almost certainly to come across one of our communications on Twitter. So we actually make eight thousand, eight thousand impressions a month through Twitter, which is actually higher than, than our other platforms, at about four hundred and seventy impressions per tweet. Low interaction, because Twitter isn't really based on likes and clicking links as much as it is just reading the short message and then moving on. So it is a low engagement, but, uh, a high reach. The most recent addition to our outreach has been Nextdoor, some of you may be familiar with it, it's a fantastic locals-only, uh, platform. It isn't really business and organization-friendly, so most of the communications have been through my personal account. Uh, I've created a page for the school district on it, but the, you can't post as that page. What it does is create as an opportunity for where people can go, um, if they want to make recommendations. We've had about eighteen or nineteen people recommend our school district on, uh, through Nextdoor since we launched that page just five days ago. And it gives the people opportunity to tag us, so that if they mention us in a post, in their personal post, there's somewhere someone can link through without leaving the Nextdoor, um, ecosystem to be able to learn a little bit more about us. We've been using that, I've seen some sample posts appear I've put up. For alerts, uh, for example, we did today, letting people know what's going on, because it's the kind of place where if a siren is going off somewhere, someone's posting on Nextdoor, what's that siren? It's literally, it's literally that fast, so I, this morning, I was posting to let people know to steer clear of prospect between Aviation and Artesia between nine and ten thirty, and why, so that they're familiar of what, what's going on. Which also gives an opportunity to, to let the community know what it is we're up to, besides answering their questions before they even ask them. Um, also for events, we've been promoting heavily the, what, you know, whatever's coming up, we put these events on here. These board meetings, um, Principal Gluck's tour with the school, whenever we have any sort of, anything where we're looking for, uh, for public, uh, attendance, uh, we will put that up there as well. And then involvement, uh, we used Nextdoor as one of our tools to try and get, uh, applications submitted for the, uh, C O C., for example, we had an open seat there, we try and let people know what we want, if the applications are open. We also use that as one of the tools for our parent survey, when we were trying to uh, get enough numbers so that we can get a good sample of what's going on in our district and feedback. Nextdoor proved to be a very, very, uh, strong source of, of, uh, responses to those surveys as well. Um, moving on to, uh, what I don't have is numbers. Um, Nextdoor hasn't evolved to the point yet where, because it's not, it's not a business sort of situation, so where I'm not getting feedback as far as how many people view us, that stuff is all, you know, as they learn to monetize and get people to start spending more money to run ads on there, we will start getting more, uh, demographics and analytics to let us know specifically how we're reaching, but feedback, certainly people say, often say to me, oh, I saw your post on, on Nextdoor. More often than I hear them saying, I saw your tweet, for sure. It is hyper-local, only local residents can actually access that information. It's, you have to be approved in order to be put into us, you know, south, there's a south Hermosa neighborhood, it's done by neighborhood. So it's a really good way to guarantee that we're reaching the community directly. Moving on to media relations, which involves when we put together press releases or news items and try and get amplification by using the press to, um, run those, 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 uh, bits of news that we shovel out there. Uh, our targets are obvious ones, of course, the Beach Reporter and Easy Reader, which are of hyper-local. Um, Daily Breeze is one that's a little bit more regional, and they've been a little obstinate about running stories about us for the last few years, but I'm happy to report that over the last year, they finally, after me plastering them with pitches all the time, have started to run some of the stories that we've put. They've, you know, put this story up about the district getting our, a green ribbon award, um, so they're starting to get on board. I also noticed that this story was picked up, it's, uh, was distributed through City News Service, which is another organization that distributes news to local papers, so, um, they've been, you know, it's been, it's been good for me, I've been very excited to see that they're finally coming on board with covering us, it's a, it's a broader reach, uh, as well, so. And the education trades, when we have something that we're doing as a school district that would be of interest to the education trade, we throw those out there and we actually got a real good hit. Um, Superintendent Escalante was at a conference, and it turns out that, that as she was at the conference, a story broke, I don't even remember specifically what it was we were promoting. The Empathy Project, just, we had got a story about our work with the Empathy Project, broke at the, was, was at the, um, the publication that was, you know, being handed out at the event itself, so that timing worked out well. And then we still have our aspirational, I call them aspirational, I'm still sending everything to the L A. Times. Uh, they haven't, they haven't picked up anything major yet, but I'm, you know, again, I felt the same way about the Daily Breeze, and eventually they came around, so who knows? And national publications, you know, when we reached out regarding the Empathy Project, we, we hit USA Today, Newsweek, Time Magazine, I put them out there, they're in my Rolodex. Rolodex, just aging myself right there, but, um, but, you know, we're, we're putting it out there, so, you know, we wanna make sure that, you know, for a bunch of reasons. Not just to bring glory to our district, but also to let other districts know what we're doing, uh, and to, you know, maybe inspire some ideas to help other communities face some of the challenges that we faced. Uh, so let's talk about the future, some of the things that, that we're gonna look forward to, uh, doing over the next year. Uh, I'm working hard to try and, we have a, we do have an account on LinkedIn, but it was created long before I was here, maybe long before some of you, many of you were here, and we are locked out of it, so the only way to get back in is to have a password reset sent to an email address that probably doesn't exist. So it's been my experience, this has happened with clients before, it takes a lot of time, but eventually they will get tired of having me call them and complaining and sending email, and we'll do something that will allow us to get there. One would say that why don't we just create a new one, but the truth is, our former employees and current employees that do have LinkedIn profiles have used that current profile that we have on their resumes that are there, and if we were to delete, if we were to start another one, it would create confusion. So, uh, the goal really is to keep using it. Uh, LinkedIn has changed to a lot like Facebook is now, it used to be just a place for resume posting. If you've been on in the last year, it's now where people do update posts and tag other organizations. Uh, if we had it up and running, for example, with our search right now for a traffic manager, we would be able to run something and we'd be able to tag people who have traffic manager on their resume. So there is some value in reaching out to the business community, uh, through that platform, so I continue to work towards trying to open that up for us. Uh, newsletter, you may recall that we used to have a newsletter, any newsletter. We stopped using it about a little over a year ago, because we discovered we were running into some issues, not through us, but we had some issues with our domain, where eighty to ninety percent of our, uh, newsletters were being marked as spam and were being dumped into a spam folder. It's been hard to track down what that, what's been causing that problem. One theory is that it was because of some of our security certificates on our website. Uh, now that our new website is up, I'd like to take a look at that again, another theory was that we, the, um, we were using, um, uh, MailChimp was our, uh, organization, sometimes they get tagged as spam just because the servers they use pump out so many emails. But we ceased doing it because by continuing to do that and being marked as spam, we were, just make it harder for us to be able to get that organic reach again. So now that we have the website up and our security certificate has been done, and we're now on a secure website, we're gonna try and relaunch that again and see if we get better, better placement, uh, into, into actually making into some of our inboxes. Websites, again, as I mentioned before, is an ongoing process, we're gonna continue to, uh, dust up the website and update a lot of our forms and documents that are there, some of that stuff is still, still a lot of old stuff, or doubles. Uh, we've uploaded new stuff and then found that some of the old stuff is still around, so we're, that's gonna be an ongoing process. The topics that we're gonna be focusing on, at least in the immediate future, uh, something that was talked about in a prior board meeting the last week, uh, last month or two, I believe, was our attendance. Uh, we're, we're gonna be launching a campaign, letting people know some, how much money we lose when their child doesn't show up to school, urging them to attend, even if it's just for an hour, and then bring them to the doctor's office. Uh, you just, you just try and really motivate our community to help us stay funded by simply having their children show up. Uh, enrollment, just also, work, uh, getting people to be aware of, of our registration windows, so that we can get people to come and continue to register, so that we can continue to build our student body out. And perhaps most obviously, the reason I was brought on in the first place, Measure S. That's been a little bit on hold, because the project has been a little bit on hold, but once we start moving forward with construction, props to the back of the room, um, we will, uh, be able to start informing the community on, step by step, as to what's going on there. So, uh, that's gonna be a much larger portion of, of our communication strategy moving forward, once that project does get rolling in a, in a meaningful way. And that's really the main stuff there, so, uh, I'll just end with a couple of my favorite photos from the last, uh, the last year, but I would, um, open for any questions or comments that you'd like to launch my way.
Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Zaleski? Right? Jen?
No, just thank you for all the work, and it seems like we're on the right track.
No, it is, it is, thank you very much, it is a bit of a labor of love, I do, again, as I would like to point out. My daughter is in the school, so it makes it, you know, really easy for me, I know that, uh, I know that, um, some of the coverage has been skewed a little bit towards View, because I'm there more often, dropping my kid off. Um, so a lot of the photography is around View, I do, I, I have my fixture in their office, but I do make, uh, I do head over to, to Valley quite often. And, um, I know that Valley is gonna be getting a lot more coverage, because my daughter will be moving over to Valley next year.
Yeah.
As well, so, um, that's something I appreciate you doing, and I really do thank you all for the opportunity to be able to do this.
Funny?
Yeah, I would just say wow. You brought us into the twenty-first century, and I'm grateful, uh, I'm grateful for the day you stood there wagging your finger at us and told us how, uh, outdated we were, 'cause, you know, there's just, there are so many balls in the air up here, it's really hard to know what that user interface looks like when you actually need information. Um, so I'm really grateful for your wisdom and insight and effort, uh, I don't think anybody else could've done it the way you did it.
Well, thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you, Stephen.
Uh, Jonathan, uh, yeah, massive thanks. I think it's almost understanding, people don't realize how much time and energy you put into this, and particularly even with the site build. But like you say, yes, it happened to be maybe at some events, but you're, you're always present, and that's, you know, massively appreciated, I don't think you, we've not called out numbers, but, um, like how much the site costs and, and, and things like that, but just the amount of value that we're getting out of this, and I, I think is incredible, so. You know, the movement you've, you know, to get onto a mobile site and things like that has been spectacular, so like, absolute heaping praise. I think also, um, just to call out at the, at our board governance meeting, I mean, we, we did pick up on, I mean, it was a big feature for the board to say, communication, I mean, we have engagement with our community and et cetera, so even just your innovation and, again, additionally pushing yourself into a new platform like Nextdoor. I mean, we're getting, we're reaching new community members that are hearing positive things, being alerted to events happening, et cetera, so that's, that's excellent. Um, is there anything with the new site that you, you know, you need extra help with or whatever else, let us know, I mean, I know that there was sort of some issue, like, there's debugging, and you're, again, you went above, you went above and beyond to debug their site and, and so forth, but I know like there was the new classes thing, and particularly as a parent, that was one thing for View, it's sort of like, you just wanna get to your classroom site, so to have to go through a directory, maybe people now are conditioned to that, and that's a good thing, or if there's anything else you need help with, I think, just, you know, um, let us know. I was gonna say, thank you also to our partners, 'cause I also would just want a, a small shout out to, a big shout out to our communication partners with H B F. and, and P T O., especially, because again, it's the sum of the parts, I know you collaborate really well, that, you know, there is, there's in a groove and everyone's sort of, um, but we see, we see really good communications from all those parties as well, so I think that's a, a really great thing to, to spotlight. I know that H B F. recently did some, uh, additional photography, so that might be some, I mean, they may, you know, sharing the love, the, the spotlighting on certain programs or whatever else. And I say that because I think my biggest comment, as you consider this, and there's the nuts and the bolts, and there's the debugging and making things work and, and whatever else, but I think it's just focusing on thrive. You know, constantly look at something and scrutinize, does that, you know, does that, as a, if I, if I'm looking at this as a potential parent wanting to send my kids to the, to the district, just look at it through that lens and sort of just take a step back and think about that, because I mean, this photography is beautiful, but what I, I, I personally, I mean, maybe it's my subject, I love seeing the shots, and you've got a particular one of your daughter, which is stunning, where it's, it's electrifying, because it's, 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 it's sort of, she's thriving, she's in a, you know, and that's, I'm seeing, I'm seeing kids, I'm seeing teachers, I'm seeing administrators, I'm seeing programs and whatever else. I don't always get, and so not to, you know, I'm nitpicking about photography, but I think you get the point, and I think also that goes towards, there was a slideshow at the beginning about all the awards we've got, like, let's put that, let's do a special spotlight on our, I mean, we, we're trying to get enrollment. That should just be a evergreen thing on our website to go distinguished, da-da-da, like, there should be, every Realtor in, you know, L A. should have a link to our site that, that spotlights that sort of feature, so again, I, I, I'm very tactical elements, I'm just going, just keep on pushing the thrive K. through life, thrive K. through life, thrive K. through, I mean, there's a, you know, hearing that so many, um, of our wonderful esteemed students are going on to be leaders at Miracosta and other high schools and whatever else, again, what can we do to spotlight that, community groups, involve them, et cetera, so, um, sorry, this is a passion project for me, so I'm just talking. Um, content, I think, you know, there's wonderful content from the principals as well, uh, they do especially love the Twitter. Um, and there's things like that, so, you know, I think where they've got, again, you're spotlighting on kids thriving, and they may be on a field trip, they may be on Catalina, whatever else, I, it goes unnoticed if other people are not on Twitter, and so how do we share that content, again, it's sort of, how do we just spotlight all the brilliant things, so, thank you so much. I mean, it's a lot of work, and, and, but it's, uh, I think it's, uh, incredible, and, and, you know, just pushing us to do more.
Well, thank you, and I concur with you, actually, while, while cake was going on, I said to Michelle, I said, how can I get those stats, I wanna build a page highlighting everything that I saw in that slideshow, because that's something we're lacking, so that's, I'm with you on that for sure, and the Twitter, we've, um, dropped the Twitter feeds on to the school sites, so that there's, so that, with the landing pages for them, that's there. Uh, and I agree with you also, I do run into a little bit of an issue, because we do have this waiver situation where I'm not allowed to shoot certain, uh, take pictures of certain students, so that it's not always clear when I'm shooting, when I'm in a classroom, I can know if that classroom has been cleared or not, but I can't always know that for a playground shot.
Totally get it.
So, but we're working for as well, in fact, you should, that's funny, you should mention that, while I'm working on a, a video right now with Principal Gluck, um, to promote the school, which she will be doing voiceover for, and I've worked out where I can be as far as getting to the library and getting video of the kids in the library and other stuff, so we're, we're, that's, you know, I meant to circle back on that, was the video point, was that using video more to, to sort of show the vibrancy of the school during its school hours as opposed to these.
Super engaging, and when, particularly when parents are going to the events and they're seeing it, they're just, they're projecting themselves to go, okay, great, and, and slideshows and things like this aren't always as engaging as seeing those really engage type of things, so, good.
Agreed, agreed.
Yeah, um, I just wanted to, fifth what everybody said, and thank you for all the hard work. Uh, particularly for coming to all these meetings and putting up with us.
It's gonna help me with my presentation, actually, so it's working out well.
That's quite a feat unto itself, so, yeah, thank you for everything that you do.
You're welcome.
I've got one last thing. On those, on the meeting, on the meeting thing, I think we posted, we do a really good job now of letting people, I don't expect we're gonna fill this room with parents, but I think sometimes just letting people know the why a meeting is happening or what the big thing, uh, maybe that goes to the newsletter, or maybe it's, you know, sometimes the communication around things, but again, it's just sort of hot spotlighting positive things going on or whatever else, so sometimes we just have news, social feeds about sort of there is a meeting, and I think that just becomes white noise to parents that there's a meeting and there's no need to go there or whatever else, but I'd love to get, get more engagement, so.
Well, actually, we're, we're working on that, because what I'm gonna do, I've just upgraded my video editing abilities, so, uh, part of what we do, and we've experimented with this a little bit, is when there's been a presentation here at the meeting, that we can break out into a standalone video and then just post that, so we're gonna see a little bit more of that as starting.
Cliff notes is.
We have a YouTube page, which is also kind of up, starting to get up and running, but it takes a little bit more intensive to download a two-hour, and then cut it down, and then type the, type out the, um, 'cause I've, we've let Facebook try and do the auto, um, titling, and it, it's almost laughable, so it does take a little bit of effort, but, uh, I, I agree as well, I really, I really wanna push into the video engagement more. Letting people know more about, without having to sit through the whole two-hour feed, know what goes on and what's discussed in, in these chambers. I think that's, that's a very valid point.
Terry, thank you so much.
No problem, thank you.
Time to study.
I'm here to the end again.
All right, we will move on now to R dash thirty-four dash eighteen nineteen, the Measure S. facilities program update.
Thank you, um, just very quickly, the summer project, Prop thirty-nine, which is the retrofitting for the lighting, um, the, there's a, um, an action item for you a little later in the agenda for the retrofit contractor. Um, we are going to be able to do the, uh, switch out the lighting in the gym and in the hallways, so we had asked to bid that separately if we didn't have enough funding, but we do. So the gym lighting. So the gym lighting will be done. I know Jen's excited. And so we're well underway. I want to thank Nancy for her thoroughness and for her reaching out and getting everybody organized and advertised and hired and everything else. So thank you, Nancy, for doing that. With the Coastal Commission, we're ready to resubmit. We did talk about the Coastal Commission application at the joint meeting a couple of months back or whenever in the recent past. And so we needed to provide some additional information. That package is ready to go. We're just waiting on one document from the city and I expect that we'll be getting that, you know, very, very shortly. We do want to make sure our city is unique and that it doesn't have its own coastal plan. Most cities do, and which streamlines the process so that you can go directly to the city in order to work within the coastal zone. But lucky for us, we are going to be meeting with the actual Coastal Commission. And they travel up and down the state. I did not realize that. So we're very, very anxious to get on their agenda. I just wanted to circle back around maybe for Mr. Higgins, Tony Higgins. I was able to, Board Member McCall and a couple of the others of you have asked me to, to make sure that residents, when they come before us, know that we're hearing them. And did you give some sort of response? So I did send him an email. I did check with our Sequo consultant about some of the concerns that he's had with regards to 27th Street, you know, wear and tear. I just want to remind you and let the public know that we did write a letter during the EIR process for the Plaza Hotel. Because we, we understand that there are multiple ways that the construction trucks and everyone else can get to those, that location. Whereas our location is extraordinarily limited in terms of options. He wrote me a very, very nice email back and, and part of it said, we may not have the same point of view. And, you know, I think he's right because I'm coming from a bureaucratic organization where there's not a lot of flexibility about how you want to make decisions. But he is coming from the point of view as a resident. And so those may not always jive, but I do appreciate his feedback and his patience. And we're really excited to bring our construction company on board and to start giving him the very information that he was asking for tonight. We are in line with him and we will get it to him. And I will make sure that we reach out so that he doesn't have to find out about it, you know, in other ways. Specifically, I want to make sure our 27th Street neighbors are okay. The MOU, the RFP for the MOU for the Traffic Manager slash Transportation Planner. It's been posted. And so we are on a very tight timeline with regards to that. I want to thank Leanne over at the city who is working on this with me and has much more experience in this area. But it's been posted on both of our websites. It's been advertised. And she sent it to professional warehouses for potential applicants. I don't really know what that means, but it sounds really good because we've already had some people who have responded. So thank you, Leanne. And I just wanted to remind everybody that a couple of months ago, I started to add a construction update on our website. So this is our third, our third one. And mostly it just talks about timelines because we really haven't started too much in the construction area, but we are very soon. And so when that happens, I'll be working with the construction company and we will try to forecast as much as we can. This will be a living document. It'll be updated from time to time. Timelines are subject to change. So, but people can hop on if they have any other questions. But we want to try to be, use this as another form of communication with our residents. And as always, if there's any input, any one of us is available to, to get information for you and to answer your questions. And do you have any questions for me?
Jen, yeah, please.
Wouldn't you just expand a little on the Sequa application, Pat, so we all know, like, is there any support you need from us? I know we're still waiting for some things you had mentioned, but I, I know we are urgently waiting for those things, so.
Right. So we, so there were a couple of items that the Coastal Commission was not able to find in our 700-page, you know, EIR. And so one of which was to, and I'll just say that we had an opportunity to meet with representatives from the Coastal Commission. Some of the local neighbors at North had asked the Coastal Commission to come in and to take, do a site visit, if you will, around the perimeter of the property. And we were able to meet with them following that meeting so that we could, you know, really address whatever they heard, what questions they had. And it was an amazing opportunity. And I have to thank Sujah Loenthal, who is our city manager, for inviting us in on that conversation. But one of the items was looking at the, bless you. One of them was to get a letter. It's a standard practice to get a letter from the city acknowledging that they are, that the project is appropriate and it's accepted in the city. One of which was the, the, oh, I'm blanking. It was a really big one. Well, one of which was, they wanted to understand about the parking. Because the school site is located in the residential parking permit zone. And so what I've learned is that those parking places are very highly regulated. They are, they, when new houses are being constructed, driveways are no longer allowed to be on the street where there would have been permit parking. And so one of the questions they asked was, will we be opening up the school parking lot in the off-school hours to, for public access parking, which we are going to do. And historically, the parking lot at North has never been open to the public. We've closed it down, nothing on the weekends, nothing if there's been a park event. And so we are going to be opening that up. And so that's what they needed, was a parking management plan. About how will we, what is our recommendation for signage? How will we, how will that be managed? And will it be open access? And they had a number of different questions. So our consultant put that together. And then they wanted a couple drawings that they needed. And I, forgive me, I don't have the letter with me. But there was one other piece. What was it? Oh, the sightlines, yes. Our architect put together a view of how the buildings will stand, sit, lay on the street in comparison to the existing buildings. So that we're looking at whether or not the height of the buildings were out of disproportionate to what existing buildings are there. And that's a really nice overlay. I should send that to you and I could also put it on the website. And then, but there was one other thing. I'm so sorry. I can't think of what it was. But anyway, we're all ready. We just need that letter from the city and we're going to send it off and get ourselves on that calendar. So. Does that answer your question?
The question I'm just wondering is, when do we need it? Since I know it's urgent to get it sent out, is there anything we need to do as a board to help get that letter from the city?
Well, you are free to do what you want. But, you know, we're really working hard and they are too. You know, I'm just a little impatient. I want to get it yesterday. So we can send it off. I got the packet all ready to go. So, yeah, I, I think that just reminding them and I know they're working on it.
Are there any other questions?
I guess just building on that, I just want to pointedly know if the, as and when, because we won't know when we'll get back in front of Coastal Commission, but will that potentially, if we can't get in front of them, will that be a delay to the ultimate deadline? I mean, we're sort of anxious to get this moving and get it going and whatever else. So this is an important step. So I just want to understand if, like to Bullman Cole's point, like, is this delay of this letter and are we going to endanger of missing something? Or is this sort of something that can run in tandem while we've got everything else lining up and so it's not too much of a concern?
Yeah, no, it's always a concern.
Okay.
We want to get it out there as fast as we can. And now that we realize that they travel down the state, it's not like you can just make an appointment and drop in or go over there. I mean, they literally, so their next spot will be San Diego and their spot after that will be Orange County. That's fortunate. But we, it's highly structured. I mean, I said to them, well, could we get on a waiting list? And they're like, oh, you're so cute. No. No one doesn't show up for their Coastal Commission appointment. So, yeah, time is money. And so we want to get going. Now, we have pre-construction activities and things that we need to do and we're going to get started with that. So I think we can work on parallel tracks at the same time, but we need to get that application in and we need to do it yesterday. So.
Are there any other questions? Thank you.
All right, we will now move on to Consent. Is there a motion to approve the items on the consent calendar?
So moved.
Thank you, Maggie. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Jen. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
The consent calendar is approved. We will now move on to Board Action. We will start with Business B-83-1819 on the General Contractor Firm Master Contract Agreements. Superintendent?
It was easy to find you because it's the biggest part of this agenda. So, welcome to our representatives, Matt and Anthony from Erickson Hall. And they were here during the interview process and presentation process. And so we are really excited to bring to you a recommendation that you approve the master contract agreements, which include the Master Construction Services Agreement, the Master Site Lease, and the Master Sublease Agreement with a general contractor firm to provide facilities, project management services for the Measure S facilities, new construction and modernization projects and facilities improvements using the lease-leaseback delivery method, and to name Erickson Hall as a general contractor. As a result of the passage of Bond Measure S on the June, oh my gosh, June 7th, 2016 election, the Hermosa Beach City School District sought requests for proposals from general contractor firms to manage facility improvements and new construction planned by the district. The intent of the RFP was to identify and to select a general contractor firm which specializes in the modernization and new construction of public schools using the lease-leaseback delivery method. Four RFPs were received and after the RFP evaluation, four firms were selected to, to interview at last March. And from those four firms, one firm was moved forward to interview with the school board at the April 10th meeting. The general contracting firm, Erickson Hall Management Services, is reputable and experienced in their work with construction project management. They are committed to sustainability, neighborhood compatibility, budget, cost analysis, and the lease-leaseback delivery method. Funding will be taken from the Measure S Building Fund Number 21. And I just want to say that we went through some different levels of, you know, background checking and references. Nancy had her crew, I had my crew, and I talked around with some of our other consultants. And you should feel very, very proud of the reputation that you have in the community and with your projects that you've worked on. One of the things that really struck me was that there was this consistent thread of the fact that the word integrity was used a lot. And also the fact that you are accessible and that you use common sense and that. All of those things that sometimes get lost maybe in the dirt or the digging as you're going through, you know, the process. We, we know that your owners are both men who are deeply engaged in the company. They know, I'm told that you can say a project and they know exactly where everybody is and what the status is and what's going on. So sometimes owners become detached from what's going on about the work of those in the trenches. So it's with that, I'm happy to answer any questions or if you have questions for Erickson Hall, be happy to do that. Otherwise, my recommendation is that you approve the contracts.
Are there any questions? Meg? Jen? Monique? Stephen? Sure?
Just a quick one, and I, just to build on that and accessibility team. I actually didn't see the, the team that was up here before, I'm assuming they're all in. It wasn't documented in here necessarily, I don't think, but.
Yeah.
That is the team.
Yeah.
Brilliant. Thank you.
All right. I don't have a question. I just wanted to say something first. Thank you for submitting for the RFP, coming, bringing the full team for the interview at the last meeting, coming tonight as well. We're just very excited to finally be here at this point. It feels like another major milestone in the commencement. It's been 35 months now since Measure S passed, as you reminded us there. So to finally have, to know that these are the guys who are going to build this school and redo the other schools is a fantastic milestone and a place to be. And we're very excited. At least I'm very excited to get you guys going. And tell me where I can bring my sledgehammer. Looking forward to it. So with that, do we have a motion?
I move to approve Business Item Number B-83-1819, the General Contractor Firm Master Contract Agreements.
Thank you, Monique. Is there a second?
Can I just ask you to add to that what those contracts are?
Do you want me to read the entire paragraph?
I, I don't think that's necessary, but if you could just say which master contract agreements, which include the Master Construction Services Agreement, the Master Site Lease, and the Master Sublease Agreement, if you would be.
Oh, sure. Okay. So I will revise what I previously said as I make a motion to approve Business Item Number B-83-18/19, which is the General Contractor Firm Master Contract Agreements, which include the Master Construction Services Agreement, the Master Site Lease, and the Master Sublease Agreement.
With Erickson Hall.
With Erickson Hall.
Thank you, Monique. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Stephen. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Welcome to the team. All right. Next, we'll move on to the next Board Action, Business-B-84-1819 on the award of contract on Prop 39 Lighting retrofit project number 006 at Hermosa Valley School and Hermosa View School. Ms. Montalvo?
Hi, good evening. It is recommended that the Board of Education award the contract for Prop 39 Lighting retrofit project to Vector Energy Corp. at a cost of not to exceed $126,470.04. The background on this item, the bid was advertised in the Daily Breeze twice a week for two weeks. The dates of the advertisement were the 16th and 17th of March and the 23rd and 24th of March. We did a pre-bid job walk on April 2nd. Bids were due on April 16th and they were delivered, hand-delivered to the district office at 10:00 AM in which they were opened. And you can see the bids from the contractors. Listed Huntington Beach Electric was $199,900. ACM Lighting was $179,614.01. Clearboo Energy was $173,557. And Vector Energy Corp. at $126,470.04. And we're recommending that we award the bid to Vector. The budget for the project is below. The architect fees of $8,000. Project manager, owner's representative of $35,125. The Daily Breeze advertising of $802.75. Total projected cost $173,979. Legal fees have not been added to this budget. They're pending. We're waiting for a bill from our legal team. But the total project is not going to exceed the cost of the monies that we've been awarded for this project, which is $248,625.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Start down this end. Stephen? Jen? Maggie?
Just a comment. Super excited for this project to go forward. Assemblymember Merit Succi had an event at the Valley School in the NPR for Earth Day last week. And just once again, the lighting. Now, I've been more fitting to talk about like the desperation of climate change and how bad the lighting was in there. Just added to the grimness of the presentation. So I'm really excited to make it a more attractive place for teachers and students.
Thank you. All right. Do we then have a motion?
I move to, I haven't done one of these. I move to accept the recommendation to award the contract of the Prop 39 Lighting retrofit to Vector Energy Corp.
I move to accept, accept the recommendation to award the contract of the Prop thirty-nine lighting retrofit to Vector Energy Corp. at a cost not to exceed one twenty-six, four, seventy, oh four.
Thank you Maggie, is there a second?
A second.
Thank you Jen, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries, thank you. Next, we'll move on to the next board action, business B dash eighty-five dash eighteen nineteen, a request for proposals for an inspector of record for Measure S projects at North School and Hermosa View School. Ms. Montalvo?
It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the request for proposals for an inspector of record at North School and Hermosa View School. The intent of the request for proposals is to obtain information that will enable the district to select a consultant who will provide the Division of State Architect or DSA project inspection services and the district will require in connection with the construction of Measure S projects at North School and Hermosa View School. The DSA inspection firm shall provide inspection service in accordance with application version Title twenty-four of California Code of Regulations and DSA IRA dash eight. The district will seek the highest qualified DSA project inspector. Advertising for this position for the RFP will be advertised in the Daily Breeze on May eleventh and twelfth and May eighteenth and nineteenth. Proposals will be due on June seventeenth by ten AM, hand delivered to the district office.
Terrific, thank you. Are there any questions? Maggie, no? Jen? Questions? No? Monique? Steven? No? All right, is there a motion then?
I move to approve B eighty-five dash eighteen nineteen, request for proposals for an inspector of record for Measure S projects at North School and Hermosa View School.
Thank you Jen, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you Monique, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries, thank you. Moving on to B dash eighty-six dash eighteen nineteen, a request for proposals for materials testing and inspection consulting services for Measure S projects at North School and Hermosa View School. Ms. Montalvo?
It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the request for proposals for a material testing and inspection consultant at North School and Hermosa View School. The district is seeking consultants to provide service for various ongoing capital facility projects including but not limited to new construction, renovation, reconstruction projects, project wide, program wide projects, infrastructure projects and/or maintenance projects and other projects related to the property ownership. Consultants will perform the services for material testing and special inspections in accordance with Title twenty-four California Code of Regulations and instructions on Division of the State Architect Structural Test and Inspections Form one oh three. The services shall include but are not limited to the following, earthwork and soil inspections, asphaltic concrete plan inspection, concrete batch plan inspection, concrete placement inspection and sampling, structural, structural masonry inspection, structural steel shop fabrication inspection, structural steel assembly inspection, structural steel ultrasonic testing, fireproofing material application inspection and roofing inspection. The consultant will perform the following tests, including but not limited to those required by the DSA TNI lists as required by the district. The testing shall be performed, be performed in accordance with the American Society of Testing Materials test methods and California test methods as appropriate. All laboratory testing shall be accomplished in a DSA approved laboratory. The district will advertise in the Daily Breeze again on May eleventh and twelfth and eighteenth and nineteenth. Proposals are again due on June seventeenth at ten AM to be hand delivered to the district office.
Thank you. Are there any questions? All right, is there a motion?
I move to approve B dash eighty-six eighteen nineteen, request for proposals for materials testing and inspection consulting services for Measure S projects at North School and Hermosa View School.
Thank you Jen, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you Maggie, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, moving on to business B dash eighty-seven dash eighteen nineteen, a resolution number thirteen colon eighteen nineteen to establish bank accounts with Wells Fargo Bank. Ms. Montalvo?
It is recommended that the Board of Education adopt resolution thirteen eighteen dash nineteen to open a bank account for the extended day childcare program known as EDCCP with the Wells Fargo Bank. The school district currently has the following accounts with Wells Fargo, a petty cash, a cash clearing account and a student fund account. Extended daycare child program will require a separate account to accurately track revenues and expenditures. The revenues cannot be co-mingled with the cash clearing account. The bank fees are very competitive and as well the district, they have a dedicated tiller at the, the branch right here to deal with business accounts.
Terrific.
All the fees would be charged to the extended daycare program for this account.
Thank you. Are there any questions? All right, is there a motion?
I move to approve B eighty-seven eighteen nineteen, resolution hashtag thirteen eighteen nineteen to establish bank accounts with Wells Fargo Bank.
Thank you Steven, well done.
Thank you.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you Maggie, all in favor? Aye. Motion carries. All right, moving on to B dash eighty-eight dash eighteen nineteen on resolution number fourteen colon eighteen nineteen to establish a stale dated warranty policy. Ms. Montalvo?
Hi, it is recommended that the Board of Education approve resolution fourteen eighteen dash nineteen to establish a stale dated warrant reissuance policy in which voided warrants may not be reissued beyond four years. Warrants that are not presented to the county treasurer within six months are considered void. If the employee or vendor holds on to that check, they can come back, this resolution will allow them to come back to us within four years and get that check reissued. But not beyond four years.
Seems fair.
Yeah.
Are there any questions?
I mean, there are.
Yeah. Any questions? All right, is there a motion?
I move to approve B dash eighty-eight dash eighteen nineteen, resolution fourteen colon eighteen nineteen to establish a stale dated warrant policy.
Thank you Jen. Uh, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you Monique, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, moving on to personnel. First board action under personnel is P dash thirty-one dash eighteen nineteen on resolution number fifteen colon eighteen nineteen to implement certified layoff terminating services of certified employees and providing direction to issue notifications to employees where services are to be terminated. Superintendent?
Thank you. This item is a continuation from the March fifteenth meeting where preliminary notices were issued to employees based on whether or not we would be able to support offering positions in the next school year. It's recommended that the Board of Education adopt resolution number fifteen eighteen nineteen which will implement certified layoffs and provide direction to issue notification to employees whose services are to be terminated. At the March thirteenth meeting, resolution number twelve eighteen slash nineteen was adopted. This resolution reduced or discontinued particular kinds of services for the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty school year on or before the March fifteenth notification deadline. Notification was delivered to those certified employees affected by those reductions or discontinuance. Resolution number fifteen eighteen slash nineteen is required to implement the certified layoff and to direct staff to issue any appropriate, to issue appropriate notice to employees of the termination of their services. In the event that funding is available to continue with those particular kinds of services designated for reduction or discontinuance, the board may rehire the affected employees for the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty school year. Recommend, the recommendation is that you approve this resolution.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Maggie? Jen? Monique? Steven? Okay. Do we have a motion then?
I move to accept the recommendation for the resolution fifteen dash eighteen nineteen implementing certified layoff and providing direction to issue non, notifications to employees whose services are to be terminated.
Thank you Maggie, is there a second?
A second.
Thank you Jen, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. All right, moving on to the next board action, personnel dash P dash thirty-two dash eighteen nineteen on certified employment transaction, employment contract for Hermosa Valley Principal. Superintendent?
Last month, the board promoted Principal Kim Taylor to the new position of Director of Administrative Services in the district office. It's recommended that the Board of Education approve the employment contract for the Hermosa Valley School Principal. Hermosa Valley School Principal position will become vacant effective July first, twenty nineteen. Consideration was given to promoting from within the organization. Presented for board approval as a contract with the current Assistant Principal Amy Rockwell to be promoted to the Principal of Valley School. So it is recommended that the certified employment transaction, employment contract for the Hermosa Valley School Principal. And the contract is attached behind the background.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Yep, Maggie, please.
Superintendent Espante, could you provide to the board at a future meeting what the plan looks like for staffing for Valley School for administration, so with the vacancy then of the AP position, what that looks like in terms of site leadership? I think it would be appropriate just to have some longitudinal information on like student staffing ratios, what that's looked like of student count numbers to administrators or TOSs. And then also what the student outcomes in terms of behavior have looked like underneath those staffing ratios.
Yes.
Yes.
Jen?
Maggie took my question, so that's great.
All right, sure. Monique?
Thank you Maggie.
Steven? All right. Okay, do we have a motion then?
I move to approve personnel item P thirty-two eighteen dash nineteen. Is that what you were asking? Which is the certified employment transaction for the employment contract for Hermosa Valley Principal.
Thank you Monique, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you Maggie, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, congratulations. We will now move on to board member roundtable. My goodness, only nine twenty, it's like some kind of record. Maggie, would you like to start us?
Sure, a couple of things. One, congratulations to our new Valley Principal, we're so excited to have you. Speech, speech, we have so many great role models who've sat in that seat and who are currently sitting in our seats as Principal and Site Leadership, so thank you so much for for taking up the challenge for, for Valley School, really excited to see your, your leadership there. My second thing was, I think Doug, you touched on this from the compact meeting, but the empathy project, the city specifically highlighted that they're really excited to, to look at that for another year for partnership. And so I'm curious just from the district side of things where our wellness committee is at in terms of, of moving that forward.
Yes, thank you. We are, we, to me.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So we're going to, before the June meeting, we're going to revisit our wellness chart and take a look at our different programs, do an analysis of their effectiveness, what are the things that we've accomplished, things that we want to look forward to continuing with. The empathy project is definitely something that will continue. Our parent group is, is passionate about it and committed to it, so looking forward to that. Beach Cities is a strong partner and we're, we're really excited. There are some ideas that are being tossed around with regards to, do we do a book club next year, do we do article studies, how can we get dads involved? So, and, and still keeping with the theme of empathy and how we can build on that, so definitely moving forward. I can bring you more information in June. There is a book time, bedtime for books on May thirty-first, thirtieth. Principal Gluck is checking the date, but
I think it's the thirty-first.
The thirty-first. And at bedtime for books
Books before bedtime.
Books before bedtime, having a flashback Beverly Hills. The, thank you. The kids go off and a story is read to them and then the parents are all in a, in a different area and there you will be discussing some book options and it'll be led by Margot. Margot will be there from Beach Cities and so that'll be an opportunity to share ideas about the empathy project for next year.
Thank you so much.
Everyone's invited.
And thanks to our wellness committee folks on that. My second question is, is for Pat. Last, I think it was last week at the city council study session, kind of out of nowhere came this storm drain trash catcher basin that they wanted to place at Valley School. So I'm curious as to, to where, where we are in terms of communicating with the city on that, what that looks like and the impact to the district.
Well, that was something I stumbled on as I was channel surfing and I saw Stacy's face come up and then her mouth opened and she said, does this school district know about that? And that caught my attention and I put down my ice cream and thought, oh boy, better sit down and see what's going on. So what I learned, and I want to thank Stacy very, very much for asking the question, was that as part of their study session on their CIP projects that there is a study, there's a trash bin. Thank you, storm catcher, trash drain, bin. I can't get over the word bin because it's huge and so there is a drain that is on our property at Valley. And so I didn't realize this and so they were talking about how they wanted to move forward with that project and it would require some excavation and it would require a little, some time. And I'm not clear as to where on our property it is, they have not circled back around with me with regards to that. But I did have a chance to speak with Stacy and let her know that I appreciated it, but that we were unaware that the, this was a project that was in their purview. Kristy Morris, who was in charge of presenting it, said that she had already talked to some principal, a principal in Long Beach where they had done the same kind of project so she could gather information on it. But I have not heard from the city with regards to that particular project.
Thank you so much.
Thank you Maggie, Jen?
Yeah, I just want to second what Maggie was talking about and just to congratulate you Amy and we're very, very excited that you're going to join us, the principal at Valley and I feel like, you know, we've seen your resume and just your experience you brought this year and I feel like we're really, you know, grateful that you're going to lead us into this point. We're in the twenty-first century, but just to really continue the great work that we're doing and I feel like there's a real movement there with the excitement and I feel like you're just going to be a great person to kind of lead the charge over there, so I'm really proud of you and excited and it's going to be a fun, fun journey to watch you on. So we're happy to be here as support too, so just please know that you go into this job with lots of people here that are big champions and happy to support you, so please ask for what you need in this role. My other things are, let's see, going back to the music, just a reminder. It was asked to remind everyone there's a final band concert on May sixteenth and it's at seven PM at the NPR and it is going to include the Miracosta Band and the Redon, no, yes? There was TBD, but there was going, potentially going to be two high school bands joining the bands, but and there's also going to be a music fundraiser on May twenty-ninth at Tower Twelve from six to nine PM. So please join them on Tower, Tower Twelve on the twenty-ninth and to support the music program in Hermosa. And we did meet as a small subcommittee for the social emotional wellness group, so we're going to kind of bring some of those ideas back to the bigger committee in June. So just wanted to keep you up to date on that.
Thank you. Monique?
Mike, yes. Amy, I just want to congratulate you too. We all know how hard good leaders are to find and you have made such a tremendous impact on this school district in such a short time. That was evident in letters that we received this week. It's evident in just the talk around the town, so I'm sure you had choices because you're so extraordinarily qualified and I'm really happy that you chose the Hermosa View School District. And then, now I have to keep it together. So I don't know if you can see this, but we have a gift up here from the Hermosa Valley Garden Program, and it's incredibly appropriate because that's how I started volunteering in this community. And I actually just showed up to have lunch with my daughter, and I got sucked into the volunteer vortex, and it is nothing short of that, believe me, we all know that. Once you're in, you're never out, so I soon became co-director, and that was it, the slippery slope of volunteerism in the Hermosa View School District. I did many things. And then, just as I thought it was all over, my Hero Ladies, Christine Schultz, Christine Tasto, and Heather Bobalow somehow sequestered me and convinced me to do more. So here I am on the Board, but sadly, this is my last meeting. I am officially resigning. And I'm very sad to do so, but my husband's career trajectory is taking us back to Boston very soon, so I want to thank the community who supported me for my bid for the Board and who believed in me, and I hope I've served you all well. That's it.
Thank you. I know it's a tough act to follow.
Yeah. Sad news. Thank you for everything. Also, congratulations, hugely excited about the announcements and our leadership, so we've got exciting times ahead on so many fronts, just where we can take things, I just want to keep pushing things and doing things and doing more with less, so that's exciting. Yeah, this is, this is exciting as well, isn't it?
Beautiful.
So congratulations, and thank you to whoever, whoever gifted us this, the fruits of labor. Just a small update with regards to the Transformation Committee. I know there's been a lot going on with the team with regards to Thrive Time, and so there's been busyness, and just know that there's lots, probably update more next session. We have a couple of, I think, exciting opportunities brought to us by community members, so I want to thank certain parents who have enabled these connections. It's amazing what brilliance we have in the community. So through Zeke Smith and the Smith family, there's an introduction to AdAstra, which is a school Elon Musk's sort of initiated school. A lot of very innovative programming that goes on there. So we'll, with regards to the program and the who owns the learning initiatives, I think it's going to be an exciting opportunity to see what programming and that we can maybe sort of bring back or take advantage of. It's not too far away. The other one is Facebook, and Alexa Levine is also a family member, a parent in the community, and she's kindly going to invite us in to give us a tour. I mean, as we heard from Jonathan, Facebook, Instagram, you know, those are platforms we're on, but actually also they're leaders in content, so how they shoot content, how content can be propelled, et cetera, I think will be an interesting sort of, to hear it from direct will be great. They also engage communities, they have a separate platform called Workplace, which when we look at privacy and security of groups, it could be something interesting to consider, but you know, how we engage particularly our student population, but also family members, et cetera. At the moment, there's a lot of secret groups on Facebook and Instagram and whatever else, and so this might be a way to more formally engage our community members. Also, they just have some of the latest amazing technology, Oculus, et cetera, and with regards to how education can be brought through that. Last but by no means least, and by the introduction from Kim, is Google. And we're, you know, I think there's a huge excitement from the Transformation Committee to do all things Google, so we're excited to go and tour there. So a few meetings, couple at the end of this month, and then we're still figuring out the dates, I think it's in early July for Google, so those things we'll have more formal updates on next time.
Thank you. I have a few things. First, show everybody this from Supervisor Janice Hahn's office is a commendation to the school district for our California Green Ribbon Schools Award that the school district was awarded. So it was very nice of her and her office to send this, and obviously, congratulations to everyone who was involved in making this happen. It's another great award amongst all the many that we showed during the slideshow earlier that our school district has done. Next, I want to thank everyone for participating and contributing in the Dolphin Dash last week up at View School. The kids had a great time, they raised a lot of money, a lot of money. So I want to thank all of the parents, the grandparents, the cousins, the uncles, the aunts, the sisters, the brothers, the nieces, nephews, strangers, acquaintances, whoever out there who gave the PTO set another record for fundraising from the Dolphin Dash, and it's just a great event. I want to thank in particular Tracy Lombardi and Sarah Mattson, who chaired the event as they do every year. I don't know if Sarah came in the dolphin suit again, but that's always a big hit. Sarah, if you didn't, you should bring that back. So thank you, everyone, for making that such a huge success. The next PTO event after the Dolphin Dash is a busy time of year for that crew, is the Daughter Dance, which is next Friday, May 17th, in the Valley Gym. The Wiener Schnitzel Food Truck Thingy will be there. You don't want to miss that, definitely not. It'll be a great time, it'll be the 80s, totally 80s theme, so get your gear ready, get your scrunchies and your jean jackets and everything else ready to go for our Totally 80s Party next Friday. I hope to see. Oh, Ellie has her whole outfit picked out. She's put the pressure on me to reach up to that, so. So I hope to see everyone there at the Daughter Dance next Friday on the 17th. I want to second or fifth what everybody else said and congratulate Amy on being named the Principal at Valley. We look forward to what you're going to bring in your new role next year, Kim as well, and what she's bringing to her role, and how everybody, it's just so exciting to see people move up internally and that we're growing this great leadership team with Pat's leadership at the top of that, and we're advancing people and not having to go outside. So as Monique said, thank you for choosing us. We are honored, and we're very excited for you and for the whole school. And last but not least, I want to thank Monique for her years of service, from the gardening club all the way to being up here. We owe a full debt of gratitude to you. Without you, we wouldn't be on Month 35 of Measure S, so.
Thank you.
It means a lot, and I hope the next time we bring them, all the board members back, that you'll make the trip back west to join us for that, because you'll deserve it. So thank you for all your efforts, all of your time, all of your dedication. It's been an inspiration, particularly to me and I know, to all of us up here, so thank you. Yeah, please.
Sorry, I just had one last, I also want to second. One thing Monique taught me as I first stood on this board was make sure that you ask the questions you think that the people in the community really wanted to hear and know, and it just gave me a lot of confidence, so I'll miss you greatly, so thank you for all your service. And then I also just wanted to just recognize that it's Teacher Appreciation Week out there, and Hermosa is just, has rock star teachers and staff, and we are just so thankful that they are working so hard for our students every day, so really want to appreciate them again every time you see them, doesn't have to just be this week, so.
Yeah, Monique, I wanted to go again after you, because now I'm losing my last veteran member up here. It's going to be me and a bunch of new people. I'm not supposed to feel old, but I was thinking about your time on the Board, and the things that I've always loved about having you up here on here is, one, your honesty and your transparency. You've always asked the really needed questions, so I really appreciate you always bringing that true self up here. You've always had the passion for the district, from volunteering with the veggies through Hero. I remember when you first approached me about, you know, what it was like to run for office on this, and you know, if I had any thoughts, and I was really annoyed because you had been like throwing stones at like a board and like nitpicking all of our decisions on the facilities project, and then you got up here and you got to see what that was like to get criticized on every decision.
Yes.
But your integrity in this process has always been, for me, such a thing that I've always taken into account. You've always kept yourself with such integrity, and your curiosity and your work ethic, when you have, when you wanted to learn more about something, you've done the research, you've always gone out to ask the questions, and to come up here and really have a very thorough conversation, so it's not just, you know, turning a page in the agenda book, you've really done your work on it. So I'm going to miss you so much. Thank you for all your work.
Thank you, Maggie.
Thank you. All right, that is it. Record time for me, 9:38, dang, I'll take it. Do we have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I move to adjourn the meeting.
Thank you, Monique. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Maggie. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.